All right, it looks like the gang's all here. Call the school committee meeting of April 9th, 2025 to order. Superintendent Ray, would you call the roll?
Here.
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 Randy.
Here.
Marty.
Here.
John.
Here.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, take a motion to approve last meeting's minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Marie. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Any objections to taking the consent agenda as a group with all of the stipends and so forth altogether? Okay, I'll read through it and then I'll take a motion. So we have appointments of EMS stipends and the COT stipends. And then for resignations, we have Rebecca Breard, Michael Doyon, Lisa Berry, and Kevin McFarland.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Marie. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? That is unanimous. And that takes us to the superintendent's report. Jeremy?
All right, good afternoon, everybody. Several things. First, just congratulations to all of our Odyssey of the Mine teams that competed in the state finals this past weekend. Both teams from BHS placed first and BIS placed third in their respective divisions. BHS will move to the world finals in Michigan in May. On Friday night, from 5:30 to 7:30 in the BHS Little Theater, we'll be doing an encore performance of those. So if you wanted to come and see that and learn more about OM. You might have saw some of the great news about Bitterford Blackout Percussion, who took first place, and Blizzard Winds took second place at the New England Scholastic Band Association Winter Finals. If you haven't had a chance to see them perform, they'll finish their seasons with a friends and family finale performance this Sunday, the 13th, 1:00 p.m., Steve White Gym. Very good, very cool. You may have read this online, but congratulations to Bitterford Middle School Athletic Director Carl LaBrew, who was recognized with excellence in middle school athletics administrator award for the Maine Interscholastic Administrative Association. Carl's dedication and commitment to our middle school athletics programs is commendable. And, you know, congratulations to Carl. He's been in that position for a while now and done a really, really good job for us. This summer, we will keep our Welcome Center open starting July 7th, 9 to 3. That does a lot of our registration for us with kids that are moving in over the summertime. The Yodel Community Calendar is a collaborative effort with the school department, City of Bitterford, Heart of Bitterford, and Bitterford-Saco Chambers to compile all activities in one-to-one app. So if you download the Yodel app, you can set up those organizations and kind of get everything in one place, trying to move in that direction. Tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon at 1:30, we'll have a finance committee based off some of the items that we'll discuss here tonight as we try to bring in a final recommendation that we'll vote on the 30th with you guys. And then finally, one of the things that we will need to discuss in finance committee and as a board is that, especially if you look at what's in our budget for technology, that we would be purchasing July 1. When you take and add a 20% to 25% tariff on that, that definitely changes the price. So I asked Rich Duttrumbel today to give me a list of the things that we would be ordering. And the additional tariffs based off just 20% is about $62,000. And so we might want to have some conversations about when and how we order and have conversations with the city council as well on that because there would be a mechanism to do that with permission. But, boy, spending 62 extra thousand or we wouldn't be spending, we'd be eliminating something on tariffs. Seems like a tough place to put us in. And it's really going to be around technology, technology equipments where we're going to get hit the hardest.
Okay, thanks. Questions for Jeremy? I do have one. Would you say that again about the Welcome Center?
Welcome Center is July 7th, 9 to 3. And we'll be open after that, those dates. And that's where a lot of our newcomer families come. We'll have the translation services, et cetera.
Physically located where?
Right now, it's at JFK, but the satellite office will move to Young School in Saco
Okay.
for the time being.
Got it. All right, good. Any other questions or anything for Jeremy? Okay. Let's run through the committees, even if they haven't met, and then just updates or when you will meet or anything that you'd like to highlight. Finance, Randy?
Nothing to highlight, just Jeremy already mentioned we'll meet tomorrow, 1:30. So, what did I?
Perfect. Policy, Michelle?
Sorry, nothing to report. I believe we meet next month in May.
Let me see. Anything from instructional or negotiations personnel? I don't think so, okay. And promotion and celebration?
We have a meeting next Wednesday, the 15th, at 3:30. Oh, sorry, Marie. Okay, at the middle school, if anybody would like to join.
Thank you, Megan. Sorry about that. And Marie? Anything to add or anything from any? Okay, very good. Good, good. I'm glad the committee's meeting and you're keeping those discussions going. Okay, there's no old business, so that takes us to a series of new business items. Jeremy, do you want to take us through the updated budget memo?
Yes. So everything changes pretty quickly during budget season, so I've handed you a hard copy. And I've also, I left the original copy of the memo that I sent online, but I also added new updated information based off health insurance rates. So just kind of want to go through where we are on this piece. But we were pretty lucky that we got really good news on our health insurance rates here. We had had a kind of a low experience rating and we were hoping for the best, but yet last week I had sent you an email that said rates would be between 3 and, you know, 14%. Well, we were on the 3 side of things. We were at about 3.5%. And when I say about, the reason I say that is because every plan has a little bit different of percentages, and so it averages out to about 3.5%, which means we will be able to, from that piece, take between $310,000 and $330,000. We still are going through all the policies. We also need to remember that open enrollment is in May, and so we're trying to anticipate or add any changes that we might know about. So we'll meet tomorrow on that piece. And we had had our meeting with city council representatives, well, it's the week before last now, that I think was really positive, and I think a lot of good came out of that. And we received a little bit of direction that our goal was to try to get the tax increase to single digits. And I think that with some action that we take tonight or recommendations to move forward, I think we can get there without taking any positions or anything like that. I actually think that we'll be able to get our expenditure increase down to about 4.5%. That's just expenditures from year to year. So, good news on the health insurance piece. Tonight, we're going to talk about JFK and what we're going to do with that building because that's obviously a big player in all of these pieces of what we've moved forward. And we talk about JFK. I was able to meet with the teachers and staff at the pre-K today and with Lindsay. And we've been working on a plan of location in-house, in district, and what we can do, which will, based off that decision, help drive what we would do on the finance committee side of the equation. So the good news is health insurance. And that gets us quite a ways on our goal. We'll be able to update revenue sheet tomorrow, but I feel confident that if we make the, you know, the decisions on certain items, we can get that to the single digits and we can get that to 4.5 expenditure and not have to make these drastic cuts to positions or anything else.
That's good. Any questions on that for Jeremy? John?
I'd like to make a motion that we go forward with closing JFK. Yeah, that's the next one on the list. Then we can do the discussion. You can vote it down. That's normal. There's no seconds, so.
Second. All right, well, we're sort of jumping ahead to item B there. So JFK closure memo, topic of discussion. So it's been moved by John and seconded by Randy to proceed with the closure of JFK. At that point, anyone from the public that wishes to comment? All right, you may feel welcome during this discussion to comment, and I'll open it up to the board for further thoughts and discussion. John?
I was glad to see the memo come today where it wasn't just done with just in the office itself and that we actually got the staff involved, the teachers involved to come up with a solution to, with the children, to keep them all in the district, all within our own buildings. So I thought, I thought that was a very good positive with this. I mean, we voted on it a week or two ago at finance to send it here for final decision to see if the board wanted to do that, but I think that just helps the cause about closing it and helps also with the budget at the same time. Thank you.
Can I go through this piece?
Yes.
So we know that we had hoped that construction would have been done, but it's going to be December or, you know, let's knock on wood, December. So we went to look at different options and we explored multiple locations. And really what we're coming to is the best location for, and remember, we have three classrooms and one Head Start. And that for our three classrooms, the best location would be BIS. Worked with Lindsay on locations, and there's a room down by the music room, this kind of, you know, where the music room is in the back, and then there's a second room and kind of a good-sized kind of auxiliary room to that, not in the gym, that we would be able to have two classrooms in plus our special education staff and therapy staff. Additionally, there's water hookup in that room, so I can put a sink in. There is a small office that goes with that, and there's a bathroom in the hallway that already has kind of a mini-sized toilet for kiddos. So you take those things and it works pretty good. It also has an access door to the outside because one of the things, as you can see in the memo, that the challenge will be is we have to have play space. And there's some grass space that we could fence in there and provide appropriate, excuse me, play facility because you can't have stuff that's too big. That handles two of the classrooms. Then we have an open classroom at BIS because of the smaller second grade that comes up for one year to third graders, we will have an open classroom. So that kind of gives us a space to be. Been working with Cicely Silva, who is the Head Start Director. And again, ideally having, being in the school is number one, but finding a place that already has licensure for her with the CDS building makes a lot of sense and makes her job a whole lot smoother. They would want to come over to the school once it was done. This option with kiddos at BIS, let's say it gets delayed until February. At that time, I think we'd sit with the teachers and say, hey, do you want to move now or move in the summertime? We may want to do that either way. From a transportation aspect, right now, our morning and afternoon buses kind of do three stops between the elementary schools and rotate around. This brings it down to two stops, other than working on a solution that we need to find for the Head Start kiddos. We have Lindsay, who's been principal of pre-K program before. Staff knows her, is excited to go there. I think Lindsay even said she might be excited about young kids there because, you know, it's different. And so I think also what we're interested about this space, too, is that there could be some real long-term benefits as we think about where three- and four-year-olds, as therapy comes in for CDS long-term. This could be a location. Additionally, one of the things that we've, I think, kind of mentioned in dreams or kind of thought about is how difficult childcare can be for our own employees, that maybe someday we're operating a childcare option. Just, I think we just, it has come to a right place and it keeps them on campus, and that's ideally what we wanted to do. And we don't have to bus all over the place. And it allows us to take, then it allows us to take the budget reductions, which are fairly significant.
Megan?
I have a couple of questions. My first one is like pragmatic. So Lindsay, do you have an assistant principal? So we're adding four classrooms to your workload. Three. It says three pre-K and one Head Start.
That will go to the other building.
Okay.
Engel, who is the student support service in my building?
Okay, so acts as like an assistant. So you feel like, in terms of like three more classrooms joining and those parents and those students and teachers, like, that's not an overburden to what you have for support services to you?
We'll be busy.
You'll be busy. Say that with a smile on your face. Like whoever your admin are, always come up when you've added extra work to them and with a smile, they look at us as a school board and go, it's fine. Okay, speak now or forever hold your peace. Like this is, you're smiling.
We're a little bit off balance, you know?
Okay, I asked. I want the record to show I asked her. So I see the cost savings of not keeping JFK open and what we'd have to add back into the budget and keeping us open, but like, so it's going to cost you money to do what you're asking to do there. So do you have, do you have a price tag for that yet?
I don't yet because Cicely and I just today talked about the moving of equipment, so I've got to look at that. My guess, under 15, you know? Yeah. Fence will be probably the most important, but I might be able to use the fence that's around her. We have that fenced off at JFK right now, so we might be able to pull that up, use that fence, and make sure it looks good, those types of things.
I was going to say, is that going to be aesthetically pleasing enough for you to reuse a fence? Like, who at this table believes Jeremy's going to reuse a fence?
If it's black and it's good condition, we can definitely do that.
I want to know if Jeremy's going to reuse a fence. Okay, that's all I have for now.
Lisa?
All right, I was all ready for something else, I guess. I was ready for the option you gave us with the CDS building. I was ready. Like I had gone over there, I had all these questions, and I didn't see the, this until half hour before I came here. So now all this is wasted, all my time you wasted on all of this great stuff that I had. And it was good. You would have all liked it, it was that good. So what I will say is Speedy Gonzalez over there wants to close Kennedy today. And I was, I'm not opposed to that. I like this option way better because everything that I had to ask you was, I couldn't see it working over there for 100 reasons, just the cost alone. Like I had, I can't ask the questions now because it's not an option. But, and moving, like, you did mention that once they move there, you could say, let's finish the year. Especially if the project goes on and it's January, at that point, you're kind of, it's worst case would be to move them. And we know moving cost is a problem, and that was what I was going to ask you because that was one of the factors, we kept eighth grade here because moving costs were astronomically crazy, so we don't want to do that. So this decision about doing this, is that happening tonight?
Well, I need some, we need some guidance for finance committee tomorrow.
For tomorrow, for us to talk about, which would be great. I like the idea that you're presenting way better than what you had for options before. Like that would have, I would have voted against that. My thought was, let's just stay and ride it with Kennedy. And I know that the city has all these plans, what they're going to do with the building. And I don't know if you've read all those documents of the plans that they have or still thinking about, and I thought, well, we'll just stay there, and it's their building when we move out, right?
Well, the law, we have to offer that to them, and I'm assuming that.
Well, they seem to have a lot of ideas, what they want to do with it, so I mean.
I think there's a, there's a lot of things to be done. Our biggest piece is that we need direction because we got to, I need, we need to bring home a number, and if we weren't closing the building.
If we're closing it, we're talking about this summer moving, not, we're not moving anybody anywhere now.
Correct.
Because I saw a moving truck over there and I didn't know what it was there for. Honestly, I didn't go. I almost stopped and went in and said, hey, what are you moving? But, don't talk to me about furniture. That's on here, too. No, it's not. But I personally, I mean, it is an extra workload, so I guess we got to figure out how we can support Lindsay, first of all, if there's any added, like, you have one nurse over there. You know, she has one nurse over there. And what else? I mean, behaviors are, you know, you say, oh, it's pre-K. I, that's pretty, behaviors are there, too, I heard, anyway. So is there going to be any discussion? We will tomorrow discuss money savings and all that with finance, but is there anything that we could offer to help an added person for her? She's going to say she doesn't need it, but I'm thinking, maybe, just maybe we could do something, I don't know, an LPN or somebody, I don't know. I think it's, we're asking a lot of, a lot of people.
So we need, I need this decision before I can get to.
Oh, well, you know what? I'm almost there.
I got to get this decision before I can.
You made me work on this for two days.
Consider all of the other things.
For nothing, for nothing.
That need to go on.
You give me an option too late.
Because if I have this, then tomorrow we can talk about numbers of what that would look like.
Okay, I can accept that, and I can actually even accept the fact, giving you a decision tonight because, boy, I was ready. Now I'm disappointed in the whole game, but I will say that for me, I can see this as an option. I like the idea of keeping them in-house. I like the idea of repurposing some things, you know, and yet came out of you, which is shocking to me, but I really like the idea of using some things that we already have. And I guess if anyone else, let anyone else have any questions, but right now, mine are all dead.
Discussion going, Megan?
So I understand you need an answer before you say this is what the implications will be for staffing. My only concern is that once I give an answer, then like, you don't necessarily have to come back and say, okay, this is the Ts that I've crossed and Is that I've dotted? Because like, you've gotten your answer from us. So like, like, I'm willing, I'm ready to give my answer. I just, I'll ask again later, what are we offering for extra support? Because what I'm just going to bring up is that when we made the decision to move the eighth grade to the high school, I really wanted an eighth grade AP, and then that got changed. It's not an eighth grade AP anymore, and so I just like, my decision would have been different. So like, I, I think that this is a great move, too. It makes a lot of sense. I also think that in order to support moves like this, we have to make sure we have enough staff in place to make those moves successful. So it would be for me contingent on making sure that Lindsay really did have everything she needed, whether that was another nurse or, you know, somebody that was resilient, another resiliency, whatever. I know you guys are creative about the terms you use, but like, another person to help support. So yes, but would be my, you know, is what I'm saying.
And what I would say is that that decision needs to come tomorrow. When we go through those numbers and come back with what we're going to put towards you guys on the 30th for a tax rate.
So I'm just being clear what like, I'm going to want to say now, so I don't say later, hey, how come it's not there?
John?
So, so I heard what everybody was saying also. So I would expect us tomorrow at the finance meeting to hash over all of that stuff and then bring back to the board, rather, the finance committee said we're not going to add it, but here's the cost, and the board can decide to add, add it back in if they wanted to on the 30th. Or we could have added too much, and the board could say, you've added too much, take some of that out. And I would assume, I don't like that word, but I would assume that as the finance committee, whatever changes we made, we give them some slight of a memo that says, okay, we took out JFK, we added this back in, we took X amount of hair, added that into carryover, whatever we ended up doing that changed the budget function that we currently have, that there'd be something so you didn't have to go through that whole big book saying, we took $5 out of somebody's insurance. That would be my theory of how we would do that tomorrow.
Correct. Tomorrow, as we sit there and make reductions, additions, whatever that is, we've got to work with that revenue sheet to say, you know, 56 buck, you know, 56,000 does this, and this does this, and this, so that you're going up and down on the tax calculation on that piece.
Just as a technical matter for the, for the board to know, it's not automatic that the school becomes city property. So we, we would vote or not vote to close the school. It does not somehow automatically revert to the possession of the city on, you know, the last day of school in June or anything like that. That would actually be separate counsel or, excuse me, separate committee action that would take that. And it's also possible that if the direction of the city or the thinking overall, which seems likely at this point, would be to move it over to Bitterford Housing Authority, that would be a direct step rather than stopping along the way at the council. These things are all possible and sort of not determined yet, but I just wanted people to understand that.
Marie?
I just want to make sure I get this right. So we have three, three rooms moving over. Lindsay's losing one second grade, so there's a net gain really of two, of two in the building, correct? So that needs to be addressed. This is a big decision, so I, I would assume that there will be constant updates and memos as to what's happening once this decision is made because it is a big move. I like the fact that we're looking down the road as well as what some of the things that can occur with regards to equipment and did I get right, potential childcare for staff. I think that's a big attraction for keeping staff as well as attracting new staff. So I like the fact that we're thinking outside the box there and we're looking down the road. So it would just be to make sure that there is adequate assistance needed where we're needed would be my, my one big concern as we look at this whole picture. Thank you.
Michelle, then, Lisa?
Quick question, we're sending, so we're sending pre-K there. There's still some admin in the building. Are they, I think there's a retirement, I can't remember, but I'm trying to remember who's in there for admin right now. Is everybody going to BPS or would anybody be joining Lindsay to help out there?
When you say admin, you mean admin?
Like office staff?
Office staff. No.
I couldn't remember who's staying.
You have, in your budget, you have two full-time office staff at BPS that are going over. We hired one, one-year position last year, and that was, that's eliminated with the closing of the building.
Lisa?
I was going to say, well, and I did see that you met with the staff at the Kennedy, I assume, right, which was kind, I think I had gone there, and the only concern, I think, that I, they said to me was not breaking up teams of people, like, you know, I work with her, I hope to move with her, you know what I mean? Because I think when you have a good partner to work with, that helps. That was one thing I thought of. The other thing, I didn't remember what it was, but I'm sure I'll think of it, and we'll have plenty of time to talk tomorrow, I'm sure, right, about this whole thing. It's just you want to, you want to vote tonight on, yes, we're going to close Kennedy, and this is the plan we're going with. Well, it's the one and only plan that we have, and it's. Well, it's the one and only plan that we have, and it, it's, it's keeping them in, in our school, within our school. And I think it's hel- helpful for transportation as well. I mean, I, that, I had a lot of concerns about that other movement over there, that you thought of.
Again, it's, as we think through these things, this is about giving us direction for tomorrow, or we...
Yep.
Makes it difficult for us as a committee to even bring something in, without looking at something that we haven't been talking about.
And if a, a miracle occurred, like, like, we're gonna do this move in the summer, I'm sure the, I'm sure the custodians are really happy, they love moving furniture, and they've probably moved enough furniture for a lifetime, right? But, if Great Falls finishes in October, you're still gonna say, stay the course, probably? Like, like, you're looking at January...
As I promised the teachers today, we will make the decision when it's available of what's best.
If it's open, it's done, and every, we're having this, yeah, and then you'll have to make a decision whether to move or not to move. It's not moving across town, though, you know, it's like moving across the street.
Yeah, I mean, but I think that for like, a young kiddo, again, depending on the time of year, you know, it's all, it's all, you know, no one wants to move stuff in the snow.
Definitely not.
You know, so I think, like, those are some decisions, and we talked about how we could, like, not move everything, and leave some things, you know, at JFK that we could get out.
Later, as time goes on?
Later.
And, and you don't really have an idea of numbers for pre-K at this point, for next year, so this is a shot in the dark. We could have 50 kids, we could have 90 kids, it's just...
Correct.
And so, let's say that that's the case, and we end up by some weird thing, that we have 90, is that still, this is still an option that's doable?
Still an option. We talked about, one of the classrooms is a little bit smaller, and so, in that room, we could think about limiting to 12, foot versus 16, because your pre-K limit is 16 per session.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so, as we look at that, one of the things, depending on which classroom we're in, and we measure that, we might say, ah, we're only gonna do 12 in this one, which this year, they're all 12s.
Yeah, that's a nice number.
Some years, we've had all 16s, and some years, we've had a session that's 12 and eight.
You know, enrollment is, is just a guessing game, and I always thought of it, and that was one of the reasons in my head, way back, what, I think we, we can go back 10 years talking about Kennedy, right, Jeremy? And I always was, I wanna keep that school so badly, and I was like, a holdout, and, and no one understood why. I always think of enrollments, and I don't wanna run out of space. You know, when I went to this school, it was, I graduated in the 70s, and my graduation class was almost 400. So, not, we'll ever get back to that, I'm sure, but running out of room is something that I always worried about, but there's a lot of schools that are consolidating and closing schools, as we see on the news all the time, right? It just seems to be the cost-saving thing to do, especially the schools that are really old, you know? But, so I think tonight, I'd be prepared, I mean, it's still a lot of questions out there, not answered yet, but to put this forward and say yes, and then we can go to Finance and try to iron everything out there. That's, is, is that a motion I'm making? Am I making a motion to accept?
We have a motion.
Oh, he already did it. Oh, yeah. You see, you're so fast, I don't even know, it's like it's done before it's done. It's done before it's discussed, is what...
The road running.
Yeah, exactly.
And thank you, Lindsay. So, if I, one last question, or a question. Take me through the playground, I'm interested, as people may know, we currently have lots of demands for playgrounds. Is the Head Start play equipment different than the overall play equipment there? Just to clarify that.
So, on the, I wanna say roadway side, on that road, Head Start is required to have a, a separate fenced-in playground that's there. They're also required to offer that up to, through the federal government, Sicily was explaining it today, to like, schools or other pieces, when they're not using it anymore through their kind of phasing-out process. And I said, well, you don't even need to look very far, because we could take that, and then if you were looking at the intermediate school, kind of, if you're standing in the front loop, and, and you're facing it, the music is, wing in the room is to your right, and on the side, there's a, there's a door there, and we kinda thought about how you could fence off that piece of grass area along the corners of the building, install that there, kids would have their separate entrance out into a kind of fenced-in playground. I think that we probably would look at adding a piece or two of equipment, you know? It doesn't have to be a lot, because they have like, one or two structures. I think you gotta have swings. And so, we would have the ability to, to take that piece and put that there, and I think that would be a pretty good solution for us.
Michelle?
To clarify, so is that right outside the cafeteria, like, without little doors right there? Okay.
Kinda there's, if you were looking, there's like, the side door to the cafeteria, a bunch of windows, and then there's a door up this way, that leads into kind of like a, almost like a nice little mudroom, and then into that classroom. You know, what I don't love is that the door doesn't have glass in it, and we might, you know, we talk about those things. And I think if you looked at it long-term, long, long-term, to use it something, you probably would think about a window situation on the side that opens into that, but gives an opportunities to think about how you don't necessarily have to have all the coats and boots and stuff in a classroom, they could be kind of out in that area. If you wanted to have a situation where you were thinking about, in the future, parental pickups or things like that, it could be done through, without going into the school, lock facility, add that door to our key swipe system, pretty easy, you know, there's a lot of those operational things that are pretty, pretty plug-and-play over there.
Can we expand a little bit on the other playground? I know that one is really popular, I can recall a situation last summer, maybe we all remember where the, the gate was locked or something, and nobody could get in there and play. It's not really part of our decision tonight, but I just wanna be thinking about it. Bigger picture, people know possibly that we have an open RFP for playground design over at the community center, we've had a lot of interest in that, and it just makes me think about the importance of playgrounds. So, maybe we, as a committee, if the school is closed, can the playground be open, or can we find a mechanism by which that can be the case over the summer? Because I think that would be desirable, or can we be thinking about access or possible future use of that play equipment? Those are all things probably down the road, but I just wanna make sure we're considering them.
And depending on, at that point in time, which body is in control of that building, I think that's how that would play out, that would play out. I do have, and as I've said to you before, if, if that building is closed, I have some concerns about what we do for fencing that off, and, and whether you're allowing use to that, or what, you know, like, we've gotta really think through that piece, because one of the pieces that we would be recommending either way, is that, as the building is closed, obviously, we'll keep electricity on. And my recommendation would be for us to put a few cameras in the hallways over there, just for added, because nobody wants to be, it will be a challenge, you know? We would keep our security system on, and our fire alarms, uh, systems on, which are, you know, six or 700 bucks a year. We'd convert that, probably, we'd probably take the phone lines out and convert that to a cellular service, because it's actually cheaper. But, you gotta keep eyes on that building and think about it, we drain the water out of it, and kinda do those things, and then, I think you gotta have some conversations about the, the playground piece, because I don't think you're gonna want people up in around that building if it's closed, because you may have days, I mean, think about right now, you go in pretty much every day. Once it's closed, you may have a situation where you're not in there every single day. And I thought at one point, Marty, wasn't there some conversation about moving that playground, or is that part of the RFP process?
That's different, I mean, that has come up. I, I asked Director Thompson, the Rec Department Director, about playground moving today, I think she's a little less enthusiastic than she was previously, based on having to move a different playground and finding out how hard it was, but anything's possible. I'll express some personal bias, I'd love to come up with a way that that playground could be open, just because I know people love it, and I think it kinda checks a box for a certain age category around town, where it's like a real destination thing, and I, I know, I for one, am not gonna like it if I have to say, well, because, long list of reasons that sound silly to a kid, you can't play on this thing, I meant the fence go, come on. So, I think just we, you know, if it's the cameras, or, or the fencing, or something, maybe there's some way we could keep it open.
Again, if, if your desire was to keep it open, my thought process is, you, you would probably want to fence that playground in a different way, because there's quite a bit of space between parking fence, playground fence, and that you may want to fence that in more, and have your parking come from the other side, uh, towards the ball field, coming in that way, keeping them off that school lot, um, might be the best solution. The other piece is, you know, that playground's been, that same structure has been here longer than I've been here. And so, you know, moving those things is not always the best for the equipment, because you're yanking them out. I would think about different fencing in that scenario.
Can the fencing we have be reconfigured? Can the, what we have, can it just be like, moved differently, so that we're not...
My guess is, Marie, is that you're gonna wanna keep a gate, the, the challenge being is, I think you're still gonna want that exterior gate, so you don't have car traffic once it's closed up in there? And you have a fence on this side, and you have road sides, I don't know that you wanna pull that up. I think that your probably cheapest option would be run from one corner up to that other fence, two sides, and put a gate. That prob, but, again, without seeing it and going out there and looking at it.
It's some spending, since you're spending time thinking about fences as part of that, could I ask that your team can think about that? I, I really love to, I think your idea's a good one. Again, for the edification of the Board, I think a fairly likely outcome of the structure, given the remediation costs that we've all sort of been taken through, that, you know, would be high, there's underground tanks, there's older building materials in there and so forth, so to repurpose it, I, I mean, to, you're talking about costs that exceed a million dollars to sort of make it into something else. If you can sign it over to a housing authority that has the advantage of experience doing that, and federal historic tax credits and so forth, they take on all that cost. You parcel out the lots over there, so that is one. The center area is another, and the, the Little League fields are another, so maybe it splits into something like three, but I think that does speak to continued access to the playground, possibly right where it sits, it's not crazy to think about. And even if it's something temporary for the summer, where there's a gate over on the parking area, the gravel parking area by the ball fields or something, I, I think that's an interesting idea, if it can be done economically, just for kids to be able to get over there. I know your concern has been the rough pavement and people tripping, which I get, I think that makes sense, so maybe there's a way where that fence prevents people from getting over there too, I don't know.
Yeah, I think if you put some fencing and you go from the other direction, it also, you know, look, all of us who've had kids at a Little League softball or baseball game, if there's an older sibling or a younger sibling, it's always nice to have a little bit of a playground around.
Yeah.
You know, and it's in a reasonable location, but I do think that you, you know, quite frankly, as two sides of a fence and a gate, probably solves your problem, and mowing inside, which there's actually a, there's a nice green space there, that can be for picnic tables, whatever. My concern, you know, for any of it, is just, I don't think, long-term, you want a lot of foot traffic, car traffic, whatever, up close to that building if it's closed.
Lisa?
Yeah, that's a good point, and, and so what I'm hearing is that, if we vote to, we're gonna close it, and over the summer, move and transition into this plan, and, and as Marty's saying, it doesn't necessarily go to the city, it could go to the housing authority, it could go to any direction, but once that decision is made from us, and the keys are handed over, like, like you're saying, I, I understand, you don't want people there, you don't want windows broken, you don't, it's an empty building, but who's responsible, once we make this decision? Like, I'm giving the keys to the city, who's taking over the responsibility of what happens to that building?
It would then be the city, yeah, John?
The minute that that happens?
No, because if, if we give the keys and the city says they don't want them, then, then the school still has it.
Yeah, but they, they, they...
It's up to the skiddy, it's up to the school to try to...
They invested a lot of discussion time in what they, the plan for this building is.
Right.
And that's all it is, is talk, right? It's just talk, and there's a lot of plans out there. But, we shouldn't be responsible, if we're closing the school, it goes, I thought the city was an automatic.
Yep.
Like, we've closed a lot of schools in this town, I mean, we closed the, the junior high, we closed Emory, that was a bit of a disaster too, but I just, once this happens, I would say, we're not responsible if things are happening to this building.
There's, there's an automatic statute that says, we have to offer it to the municipality.
Yeah.
The municipality can say no.
I don't, okay, if they do, then what? We'll put a for sale sign and get realtor?
Then, there's a whole, there's a whole...
Exactly right.
There's a whole thing where I think we've become real estate agents.
Yeah, but then, we're still responsible for maintaining it. You, like you said, drain the water, do this, do that, but we'll keep some...
You actually have like, you actually have like, statute talks about a 60-day window.
A 60-day window that, before they make a decision?
No, after they make a decision.
That we still are responsible for 60 days? Now, I thought the city and the school were working together, like, we were becoming really close friends.
We definitely are.
Okay.
I think there is awareness of, of the plan.
I was there, I, I did it with my city councilman.
As, as I've said, it's a huge and important piece of land within the city.
It's a really nice piece of real estate.
I can't imagine that the city is not going to, you know...
To, to, to use one of their ideas, because if they don't, you know...
There's plenty of ideas, yeah.
I was, I sold real estate in the 80s, I'll dust that off, and, and I'll, I'll broker that for you, okay?
Marie?
This has been talked about for a while now. Is there any interest from Housing Authority or from the city to do? I mean, I think, was there a committee at some point to talk about ideas? Where, where are we at on all this stuff?
Yes, for the, for the committee to know, yeah, the, the Housing Authority has had active discussions, I, I can say with good certainty, they'd be very interested, there's good possibilities. I think, I think as the dominoes fall here, that, that step would naturally happen. I'd be comfortable with saying that, based on conversations up to today.
Just also, just also, Marie, that once this decision made, is made, it also triggers some things like that offering it to the city, which has to occur, a letter to the Commissioner say we're closing the school, there, there's some processes that get triggered by that, this official decision.
Anything further? Okay, all those in favor? And anyone opposed? I don't think so, so that's unanimous. All right, big step, big, big moves going on here. Appreciate it. That takes us to, I think we, right on up to health insurance update, is that right, Jeremy?
That was old information, that when we put the agenda together last week, we have found out more, and that's been handled through budget update.
Okay, sorry, yeah, got that. All right, so then we can move to Item D, which also will need a motion, this is transitioning middle school grading platform from jump rope.
I'll make a motion that we transition from, from the middle school from jump rope to infinite campus.
Second.
And moved by John, I heard, and Megan on the second, and, and he just, anyone from the public wishing to comment on this?
And back to the committee. Discussion thoughts, Michelle?
I just have a quick question, makes total sense to put it all on the same platform, but does closing jump rope save us any cost going forward, or are we just at the end of a three-year cycle or something with it?
So, this section's about $4,000, that, you know, once the decision's made, that would be something we'd talk about tomorrow. And then if we looked longer term, of bringing elementaries into a different software system, it's about 14, Mandy, total? 12 in total? So, I think in another year, we might have some more decisions that would come about, totally move into a different system.
To a point where everybody's all on one? Okay.
Wanna just clarify that, Marie? So, the, the question is, we would get all, all the schools on one system? So the, uh, the question is, we would get all, all the schools on one system? Is that the question?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And John?
So, were you talking about getting rid of Infinite Campus, maybe in a couple of years?
No, no, no.
All right, you know, I mean, I like that system.
We like it.
Oh, well, no.
It's got everything on it that you need. It's all in one's place, you can see everything, so.
Infinite Campus will do grading, obviously. Okay, other comments or thoughts on this? All right, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? That looks like that's unanimous as well? Okay, thank you. Good discussion, it sounds like, uh, making things a little more seamless is a good thing. All right, we have, uh, a couple of field trips to consider. We have a second reading of an overnight field trip for adventure-bound rafting.
Some move, second.
So moved by Marie and seconded by John, you guys switched, that's good. Uh, any, any discussion on this one? All right, all those in favor? That looks like an amazing trip, it's great to be working with, uh, teams to trails. Uh, first reading of an overnight field trip for the Odyssey of the Mind.
Some move, second.
It's moved by Marie and seconded by John, any discussion? Um, okay, all those in favor? I just wanna say that, um, my daughter went on this field trip back when she was an Omer, and it's great to be going with, uh, Ms. Ty and Ms. Salo, and they have a heck of a lot of fun. I'm super proud of our, uh, teams for advancing to the, uh, world finals, which is, uh, quite a show. And the teams from all over the world, they have little traditions, like swapping pins and stuff like that, and it's really, really neat. And I know there are, uh, generally, uh, parent chaperones for that, so thanks also to the parents that get involved with that. Um, anyone from the public wishing to comment on anything?
I just wanted to say, they've, Odyssey of the Mind's had a real good run. We've had lots of success there with teams doing quite well and moving on, you know, to the world. So, you know, kudos to, you know, people organizing and running those programs, and to the kids and the parents, you know, involved. Um, it's a good thing.
Completely agree, Marie, and I think, uh, Ms. Salo and Ms. Ty deserve tons of credit with, together with everybody else who makes the thing happen, and a lot, you know, I think the kids get a ton out of it. It's like so many programs that we run, you know, we're getting involved with, like, at Apex, they work out bikes. At, uh, My Place Teen Center, they cook, but it's a guy out like working in teams and learning to collaborate. And I think, uh, Odyssey of the Mind is incredible for that. And they, they only have seven minutes to deliver these big presentations. There's some of the props in the back, I think, so they, they have to, you know, really learn to work together and, uh, solve problems together, which is, uh, great preparation for, uh, the real world. So, okay, other comments or thoughts from the committee? And Megan?
I just wanna correct, earlier I said that the meeting that we had for promotions and celebrations was on Wednesday, the fifteenth, but Tuesday is the fifteenth. So like I just misspoke, we're meeting Tuesday, the fifteenth, at Bedford Middle School.
Tax Day.
At three fifteen. So I got like all the information wrong, Scott, like I'm sorry. So three fifteen, not three thirty, you'll be late if you come at three thirty. Three fifteen, come into the middle school, and like, where in the middle school exactly are we meeting? In the library. So now I have it like Tuesday, fifteenth, three fifteen, Bedford Middle School Library.
Thank you.
Right, okay, good. Thank you for walking me through that. I need all the help I can get.
Uh, you're, have you had a meeting already, or is this?
This'll be our first.
So, yeah, yeah, that's good. So this is super important, it's, you're, we're on a tight timeline, so thank you for doing that, if we're able to put together something this year. Okay, other comments or thoughts from the committee? John?
So, uh, I went to JFK the other day for that Little Inventors. What a great experience. It was, it was really fun. The kids were really excited to tell you how, what, what their projects did that they made. I mean, it was a great time. I really, really enjoyed it. I don't know how many of you got to go, but it was well worth the, the time.
I agree, that was really fun. I, uh, been having a lot of fun on my actual professional LinkedIn page, talking about, hey, these kids are so smart, and they're running faster than some of the startups that I work with, so that's pretty cool. Other comments or thoughts? Um, I do have just a couple, um, so our, just highlight for me somebody, so the, we do not meet on our normal schedule because of school vacation week, right? So we will meet on what date here?
Thirtieth.
We meet on the thirtieth. And that one, Jeremy, did you just wanna tell us about sort of budget-wise, what sort of has to happen at that meeting? Just for our thinking?
We gotta take a vote. Give it to the city council, one way or the other.
That's really important to emphasize. Because of the schedule of elections and the thirty-day period now required for absentee ballot mailing, we have to approve the budget however it may land on that night, so that it can go to the council for approval on May sixth, in time to be published and noticed appropriately by May ninth, I believe it is. So it's a pretty tight bang-bang-bang schedule, uh, when we come back from school vacation week. So that's worth knowing. Uh, because that meeting day has changed, I, I get the chance to talk a little bit about Earth Day, and there are two Earth Day cleaning, cleanups happening in the city. If, if you're, uh, so motivated to, to volunteer, that, that would be great. Uh, the Rec Department is doing one on Thursday, uh, the twenty-second, which, for the, well, somebody help me with the calendar there. It's, uh, Thursday, the twenty-fourth, excuse me. Um, and that one is, will be at Clifford Park, and, uh, that's through the Rec Department. And then, uh, the Heart of Bedford and the Bedford Sustainability Committee. And, uh, also, I've managed to loop in, the Bedford High School Sustainability Committee will be doing a downtown cleanup on that Saturday, the twenty-sixth. So make time for one of those if you can, it's great to be able to spring, uh, do a spring cleanup. And then just the, uh, uh, the last thing is the construction, uh, project on Elm Street. Um, I'm officially not allowed to call it the nightmare on Elm Street, but I, um, I really wanna give a lot of kudos to our Public Works Department for working so hard on this. Just to provide a touch of background, uh, this is something that, um, is both, uh, a really big environmental win for the city, but also something we are mandated to do, uh, by the state DEP and even federally by the EPA. So when you see the drains in the street, uh, historically, uh, the tradition was thirty years ago or something, they all went to the sewer plant. When you had a massive rain, it would overflow the sewer plant, and then it would just go, everything, sewer and rainwater would go into the river together. Uh, at that time, maybe the thinking was, it'll, the volume of that will all just wash it away. Uh, thinking around that has changed, so we have been going through the city and separating those two pipes under the street. As you can imagine, these are massive pipes, they're three- or four-foot diameter pipes, so it's a big job. We're going around through the city as much as we can, eliminating those, well, you see, the catch basins are still there, but where they go to is changed under the ground, so that's what we're doing on Elm Street. That's why it's so hard and it takes so long, 'cause you got, you gotta make room for this massive pipe. When you see those pipes there, you know, they're just big around. So thanks to the, um, Public Works Department for working so hard and thinking so hard about how to get this right, including with the City of Saco, I really wanna thank them. They've actually had to move a couple of their street vests, so they won't close their streets on their side, so we can, we're gonna get like a one-way flow throwing, flowing through the city, south on Elm, north on Main. They've re-timed the traffic lights and all kinds of stuff like that. Really, all this is leading up to me telling you, uh, that's, some of that started today and tomorrow. If you look and go, why do they close it, they're not doing anything? There's a few days here where they are, we are just literally looking at the flow of traffic, making sure the traffic light timing is working to move things as best we can. And then, once we feel good, we got that nailed, we will be digging as fast as we can. The goal is to get it, um, done for Veterans Day, so we can have it all open for that parade. And then, uh, we will open it, though, for Memorial Day Parade as well. We'll, we'll, that's, uh, we'll pause the construction project so we can do the Memorial Day Parade, but we wanna have fully open for Veterans Day. That gives you an idea of the timing and the scope of the project. It's gonna be at four pieces, or as we go up the street. And, uh, last thing I'll say is, big thing driving the timing this year is that, next year we have state funding to completely pave and make that section really pretty, more of a gateway to the city. We would hopefully not have wanted to do it the other way, where the state came in and did that, and then we tore it up. So we're getting this done, and then that will come in and complete it. Uh, so, thank you for listening to me on that.
Will you be able, will you be able to paint the bridge?
I am so interested in trying to paint that railroad bridge. They are coming through.
I've been interested in it, too.
Replacing the ties.
Not teal.
I, I've been interested in that for a while.
Not teal.
So it's, uh, somebody in the, who can hear us knows somebody at CSX or Pan Am or something that could help the mayor get in touch with that person, 'cause that's been forever.
Just do it and ask for forgiveness.
That's true, Randy says just do it, and then fill out the paperwork later.
They're gonna say no, it looks nice?
We'll paint it black and orange. All right, uh, thank you, everybody. Uh, with that, I would take an emotion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, adjourned, all those in favor? And that is unanimous. Thanks for a good meeting, everybody.